Please stand. Councilman Evans will lead us an implication. I will do the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. Father, our strength and our divinity, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Please be with us as we conduct the city's business. Help us to use sound mind and sound judgment as we make decisions. Be with our city, be with our state, and be with our nation as we deal with this pandemic that has been thrust upon us. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel is now in session. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate you. Thank you, all the audience out there on Facebook Live. First item we have tonight is public comments, and I have them listed here. And I don't think anybody here has any public comments. Last one time, I don't see any. Okay, Councilman Andrews unable to be with us tonight. He's had a death in his family, and he's involved with that right now. So let's keep his family in our prayers and thoughts as this goes on, because it's a hard thing to have. All right, old business, we have no old business. On the new business, first item here is discussion of the employee Christmas bonus. We looked through our budget, and we were able to get enough money together to get, have a little bonus for our employees. And, you know, they well deserve it. Our employees have done a lot for this city, not just for us, as a mayor and council, but for all our citizens out there. They've done those very trying conditions. Police and fire have to go out to the middle of the stuff and have contact with people every day. Public Works is living with it every day out there, because they have nothing really to stop things that's going on around them. And, you know, the rest of the people, we're open for business. You have to call for an appointment. But if you need help, come in and see us, and we'll certainly, we're certainly there for you. Our employees are there for you. I'll entertain a motion to do the employee Christmas bonus this year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Okay, I think we can take the motion and just maybe extend it a little bit, if you would, and show where the funds are coming from. For the general fund, thirteen thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents from one assigned fund balance. And from the enterprise fund, three thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and sixty-seven cents from the unrestricted net position. Anybody okay if we add that to the motion?
Yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Here and none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Like, like sign for nay? Okay, it passes. Employees, you all well deserved this bonus this year. It will probably be in the December third. Is that correct?
It could be Friday, December fourth.
Friday, December the fourth?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, our employees. Just thank you very much. Next item here is a resolution, predisaster hazard mitigation plan 2020 update. And, you know, we're fortunate to have the Susan Lanfrere. I don't know why I get mixed up somehow. I'm sorry, Susan. We've sat in a number of meetings together getting this thing, and she's been our leader for Houston County. But we have before us here a resolution pursuant to disaster mitigation act of two thousand, authorize adoption of the Houston County predisaster hazard mitigation plan 2020 update. This update's done once every five years, and this is the fifth year. And... Susan, you have anything you want to add to that whatsoever? Do you need anything?
Nothing really important added. I would just say that this plan is a, it's noted, female required every five years. And it does allow, if Centerville wanted to apply for any future female grants, it is legally required to have this same plan in place in order to do so.
That's correct. And we were able to use it a couple of years ago for a female grant, I believe, for some things. So it's absolutely wonderful, and we appreciate everything you've done to help us with this. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the city of Centerville, Houston County, and the other municipalities in the county are required by disaster mitigation act of two thousand to complete a predisaster hazard mitigation plan. And whereas, under the provisions of the disaster mitigation act of two thousand, local governments that can complete predisaster hazard mitigation plans will remain eligible for federal mitigation funding. And whereas the city of Centerville, Houston County, and other municipalities in the county have completed the required five-year update to the predisaster hazard mitigation plan that fulfills the federal requirements of the disaster mitigation act of two thousand. And whereas the updated Houston County predisaster hazard mitigation plan has been presented for public comment reviewed by federal, state, and local agencies and revised to reflect their concerns, now therefore be resolved that the city of Centerville formally adopts the Houston County predisaster hazard mitigation plan 2020 update, resolved on the seventeenth day of November, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution as read.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Anybody have any further discussion on it? This is a pretty comprehensive plan, and I hope everybody's had an opportunity to at least review it. If you're sitting on the thing when it's being done, you get a chance to review it in detail, right, Mrs. Susan? Okay, I call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? It passes. We now have a new resolution, the city's Centerville pursuant to disasters mitigation act of two thousand. All right, item number three is a 2020, 2021 Georgia Forest Street Commission Volunteer Fire Assistance Fifty-Fifty Match Grant. Councilman Amiho and Chief Jones, please.
Yes, sir. I'm going to defer to Chief Jones to talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Amiho, and Council. Good evening. Tonight, just advising, and we're gonna be requesting to submit a volunteer firefighter assistance grant to the Georgia Forest Street Commission. This grant is a fifty-fifty match grant, up to ten thousand dollars. We're actually applying for ninety-eight hundred dollars, although the city could be reimbursed if awarded forty-nine hundred dollars. What we're gonna be applying for is some wildland education type gear for some of our fire department members that do not have this gear. I believe eight cents, and then a few help items to go along with that. So tonight, we're asking that the mayor be the final signature on the grant and approval to submit the grant. And also the fund, we can build the forty-nine hundred dollars in our current budget for some of the smaller entities we have in our budget.
Great. Councilman Amiho, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we agree to participate in this grant and that you, that we delegate you as the signature of the grant.
I second that motion.
Have a motion is second. Anybody have any discussion on it? My one discussion is that, Chief Jones, thank you so much for being so observant of these grants, grant availability out there, and finding something like this for us.
Yes, sir. We, we applied for the last few years. Been fortunate enough to have been approved for the last couple of years. So we're trying every time we can, and every time I get an opportunity, I try to apply for new grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I call for a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, this grant application has been approved and now signed. All right, item number four. Fire department member random agreement adjoining property improvement on five hundred and five-ten Houston Lake Boulevard, Centerville, Georgia, three-one-zero-two-eight. Councilman Amiho and Chief Jones, please.
Yes, sir. Can I defer to Chief Jones to talk a little more about it?
Thank you, Councilman Amiho. I'm gonna defer to City Attorney Tiny for a few minutes and let her explain a little bit more of what it is, and I can explain in layman's terms.
A few weeks ago, Chief Jones approached me and said, we have a strip of land between the new fire station property and the adjoining property, abutting property owner, which is the strip center there that is something like a trench, and it collects trash and stuff. It's a site for drainage. And what was proposed, that is part of the fire station project, that that be cleaned out and filled with gravel to facilitate drainage and not be a trip hazard or a catch-all for trash. And he said, you think you could come up with something like that with the abutting property owner? So I worked on an agreement, got a little more detail from Chief Jones, and said, if I understood you, this is what you want, drafted an agreement. And he met with the property owners, and in the, the sum of it is half the property is theirs, half is ours. It's a little over a foot wide or something, less than two feet wide. But the agreement serves the purpose of having their permission for us to be on their property and make the improvements as well as ours, and we will maintain it and keep it free of debris so it facilitates drainage. And the agreement, once signed, which Chief Jones has already gotten them to sign, will be recorded against both pieces of property and state that no owner of it, whether it's the city, the current owner of the abutting property, or a successive owner, will be able to alter that without permission, written permission of the other party. So that means it will be maintained as drainage and, and basically until, less than until we agreed otherwise. So we came up with that. I was able to draft that. Chief Jones was able to meet, we have a good relationship with the abutting property owner. They have signed, and so he's coming tonight to seek approval for the council and the mayor to sign him in board.
Exactly what she said.
Okay, Councilman Amiho, you have a motion?
Yes, sir. Sir, I make a motion that we accept the agreement, and, and of course, you would endorse it, sir.
Second, that motion.
Have a motion is second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make sure we clarify. So basically, we have a ditch about a foot and a half or so wide.
Well, there will be a trench. Where will they put the retaining wall up? There's gonna be a retaining wall beside their building about this far.
Okay.
And it's gonna leave a void space, a trip hazard, and it'll be a catch-all for trash.
Between them and your wall?
And we're gonna fill it with gravel.
And their building.
Okay.
Their building, our retaining wall will be right here. You got about a foot width right there. And it'll be about a two-foot deep trench. And that, they wanna fill it with gravel instead of it being a trip hazard that's often gonna fall into or trash.
But it's really not a space that people should be transit in.
No. If you'll look, the back attachment to the draft agreement is in exhibit A. And if you look on the right-hand side, it says subject property and points to that. And the little dotted area is accident area.
Okay.
And that will be attached to and made part of the agreement. So when we record it, it'll all be there. And this was prepared by Sandra Denzinger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any other call for a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, it passes.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to sign.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Jones, for this, some more good work. I appreciate that very much. We all appreciate that very much. All right, next item here is approval, replacement sewer camera, water sewer. Councilman Wright, Director of Operations, Brownfield.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor, your package, y'all should have it, quote, the P and X supply company. What this is, is a replacement for our sewer camera reel and monitor that we use in our sewer department. Basically, this, this camera saves us a lot of money when we can go in and look at underground before we dig the street up, before we dig, you know, yards up and things like that. Well, the camera we have now is about twenty years old, and it's, it's in need of repair. It's gonna cost more to repair than than to replace it. And we do, we do with budget for items like this, and we do have the money in, in machinery and equipment line out and ordering sewer. So we're actually commissioned tonight to go ahead and replace this camera at nine thousand nine hundred dollars with P and X supply. The reason it's, it's the only port that we got was it, 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 this company and this camera works well with the actual sewer machine that we use. So we wanna stick with the same brand and the same.
Does it work together?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I move that we approve this request for the purchase of new sewer camera.
Okay, have a motion?
A second.
Motion is second. It's, doesn't really need discussion, man. We really need one, and that thing is invaluable.
It, it pays for itself in less than a month.
I agree with you.
So it's, basically, it's a portable camera that you can carry wherever you need.
Yes, sir.
Does the, um, does the existing camera that you have have any value for you?
No, it's, it's shot.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does it take digital photographs?
Uh, the new one, uh, we don't, yes, sir.
Is, is it like a borescope, something like that, or sometimes it's just a camera system that goes, has like?
It's attached to the cable. We'd be running it.
I'd check it out when you get it.
Yes, sir. Be glad to.
Please leave me off the email of any of the digital photos from inside the sewer. I'm all set.
Oh, you got, you got, okay, I call for a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that. All right, item number six here then is approval resolution and signature card for confiscated funds account. Councilman Evans and City Accountant Harrison, please.
So, of course, anytime signatures, signatories change, we have to update our signature cards at the bank. And because we've had some changes on this particular conference to live, what we need to do is, is update. And I believe we're adding the mayor.
We are, we're removing personnel that's no longer with the city. So in order to do that, we've got to have a new resolution and a new signature card with the existing signs, which will be mayor and council.
Okay, so, so we just gotta update that card?
That's correct.
And so, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, go ahead with that process?
Okay, have a motion?
A second.
Have a second. Well, this is a document right here, but we have to sign with a new signature thing. It's, it's just replacing the other one. Okay, I call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Passes. Thank you very much. Got a bunch of signatures there. I'll wait for a few minutes on that. All right, item number seven here. It's discussion, approval, police department organizational chart and funding source. Got my name here, but really, Councilman Evans, I believe you have that one, sir.
Are you gonna give it to me?
Well, I'll, I'll take it.
That's, that's fine. You know, we've been, we've been discussing this for a while.
Yeah.
And we have the county here who's assisting us in our police department. They're taking the time to put together what they feel is, is a viable organizational chart for our police department, of course, starting over with the chief and two divisions. Administrator folks will be attached directly to the chief, because sometimes they have to do things that normally no one else would need to be involved in, along with Steve Holland, as far as, uh, even open record requests and things like that. And then we have a patrol division with a lieutenant and a investigations slash investigation division, which basically covers everything else, animal control, code enforcement, and investigations. And this, this organizational chart basically ensures us that on any shift, that we're gonna have leadership. If a sergeant can't make it, a corporal will lead that shift, and we won't necessarily have to try to get another sergeant to come in to, to, to run that shift. I, I, I look at this, and I think it is, is a, it is, it is a good plan, and I think it's very reasonable. And along with that, City Accountant Harrison has taken the time to run the numbers on the force. So if you could explain that part, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Evans. Based on the discussion that I had with Captain Harlow and Corporal White, we just kinda did a schedule of what the positions would be from the organization chart. As, as we talked about, and he referenced the last and the staff, the assumption was that sergeants would roll to lieutenants, corporals to sergeants, patrol to corporal. And I just really, based on that potential change in second grade, just estimated with the annual and then what the cost for seven months would be. And the additional cost was about nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. That's really just a best guess estimate until, of course, specific personnel is identified and where they're going. You know, that might change just a little bit. I also looked at the current police budget, and there is some additional funds and intergovernmental, because we have not, our jail and voices have been very, have been really nil because of this whole COVID nineteen thing. So we've got money in that line, budgeted in that line that we can make regular wages.
And so the, the cost for the remainder of the fiscal year, fully staffed, the police department is fully staffed, is gonna be about nineteen thousand dollars.
Per additional nineteen thousand.
Additional nineteen thousand dollars.
And that's, like I said, best guess estimate.
Right, right.
There's no additional personnel, keeping the twenty-two people that are currently budgeted for the whole year, just a change in the grades, and that's what, that's the, that's the increase in the cost there.
And that's for the regular wage line item. You know, right now, we have a budget in the overtime line item. And as, of course, as increases are made, overtime naturally goes up a little bit. But I don't know that it will be enough to go above the top of the budget at this point. I think that's something that will just be monitored as, as, when we want.
The more fully you staff, the less overtime you need.
Yeah.
You know, there's a potential savings in there, but because it's COVID nineteen, we may need it more. You just never know.
Right.
You know, it's, we've been fortunate. We got some reimbursement back from the federal government, through the state, of course.
Very fortunate. I don't know if Captain Harlow, who's wanting to stay with them, or?
Yeah, I, I think it's all right here, I'm sure.
Yes, and I just want to thank Mayor and Council if you will take a look at this. I think it's a very viable organizational chart, and it will certainly help the morale and boost the police department in upcoming months and years. And I feel that as we expand in the city and as we receive more businesses and residents, and like I said earlier, in your work sessions between now and fiscal budget of next year, you may wanna look at, at, look for funding sources for several, at least four different, four more positions that the law offers. And just keep that in mind as you, as you move forward with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. I talked to Councilman Andrews about this. Councilman Andrews and Councilman Evans are the two councilmen over the police department at this particular time, and will be for the remainder of this fiscal year. And Councilman Andrews indicated that he was completely in accordance with this recommendation, this thought process of the organizational chart and for the funding source. So I was making that as a statement. Okay, I'm gonna call for, I guess I, I need a motion.
So moved.
All right. The motion is to approve the new department organizational chart and approve the movement, the intergovernmental movement of the funding source. Okay, I have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
A second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, I don't hear any further discussion from anybody. Call for a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Okay, this item passes. Thank you very much. Captain Harland, really appreciate your efforts in doing this. I think we'll be pleased with it.
Yes, it's, it's all about taking decisions at the center of you.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you very much for that. Okay, we start comments from the council. Post two, please.
Yeah, Mayor, just to remind everybody, I've been getting some, some emails from Corporal White and from Captain Harland, just reporting some of the, the calls that they get. It seems to be that time of year for people to be breaking into cars again. It seems to crop up every year around Thanksgiving and Christmas. And on most of those, most of those calls that were listed on there, the, the cause of it was the car was left unlocked, and there were valuables left in the car. So just, let's, let's say to everybody, we can't keep your vehicles locked. Do not leave any money. Do not leave any electronics. Do not leave any medication. And please don't leave any firearms in a vehicle, even if it is locked, okay? That's, that's just, it's something that, it shouldn't be happening, and you shouldn't have to, to be that proactive necessarily, but the, the world will live in it. We wanna make sure that everybody stays safe in every way possible. It gets a headache to deal with that when it's, when we're not in the middle of all this COVID stuff. I can't imagine trying to get insurance company on the phone right now. Protect yourself, protect your neighbors, and just be as proactive, be as vigilant as you can. And let me take one more chance to say, if you see something and you're concerned about it, please call nine-one-one. Don't post it on Facebook. Don't post it on Nextdoor. Don't text your council member and say, hey, I think there's somebody shooting at my house. Please call the cops. I'm not coming down there. That's not what I'm here for, okay? If you have an issue, and there is this, this sense of, well, we don't wanna bother anybody. And, and I promise you, they don't see it that way. They're, they're here for you. And people say, well, I just wanna call that non-emergency number, because this isn't an emergency. Well, in Houston County, we have an excellent nine-one-one center. If you call our non-emergency number after five o'clock, they're gonna answer nine-one-one once you're emergency. So that, that, for no other reason than that number is easier to remember. Call nine-one-one. We have excellent officers. They'll get to you right away, and they'll, they'll take care of you. But to, to address things hours later, sometimes days later, just doesn't help. You know, they can only, they can only deal with the problem while it is going on, right? So they're here to serve you. Let's, let's use them to the best of their ability. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That was a good catch on, I saw that too, the entering autos unlocked. It's right time of the year for them to start over again. Because there was nothing to do, so they're wandering the streets again. Post three, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo all of Councilmember Wright's comments. And I'd like to add, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please be safe. Take care of yourself and take care of your families.
Thank you. Post four?
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to first recall, I know since our last meeting, November the eleventh was Veterans Day. And, you know, we have a lot of veterans, not only in Houston County, but certainly in Centerville. We actually have a lot of veterans right here in, in our city that work, their employees for our city. I wanted to mention that BFW Post sixty-six oh five and nine-nine-nine-eight have certainly citizens from Centerville and from Houston County. And on November the twelfth, they offered free meals to the vets. And so any veteran could have gone to, to the, to the BFW on Porter Road, received a, a very nice meal for free. And on the thirteenth of November, they handed out food. It was a whole, there was a food giveaway that they, that the BFW did for the community and for everybody and everybody that would come. So not, not, not to mention all the local restaurants, especially like Old Charlie's around the mall area here, that offered free meals to veterans. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for taking the time to recognize the veterans and their sacrifices and, and just select the veterans, now that we do here in San Antonio, care about them as well. And so I just wanted to mention that the park is looking crazy, man. I went, I drove by there the other night. There's sidewalk lights. There was, everything looked like it was ready to go. And, and, and the playground looks great. I was like, really, I was like, I couldn't even believe it. I was like, because I, you know, I tried to get by there so often, and I was really excited to see it. I was like, everybody's getting excited about it, so... But the thing that we have asked, and I, I know we posted on Facebook and stuff, is that we just, give us time to finish it before you go out and, and go out and do all that stuff laying on it, do that kind of stuff. Just, if you would, please refrain. Just, if you would, please refrain from going on there. Everyone's gonna be able to enjoy it soon, but let us finish it. So please, and again, I appreciate all the hard work everybody's putting into it. Certainly Kate, you know, your leadership to help get all that going together is just wonderful, so. Unfortunately, I missed the last, um... Farmer's market. Yeah, I wanted to go so bad, I missed it, so. But anyways, I appreciate that. That's always a lot of fun. Fire department is doing great. They're doing, they're putting bricks up all over the place. So we're starting to see real progress and development. Even though we're, we're dealing with COVID, and even though we have all these things, everybody's still making things happen here. And it doesn't take just one person. It takes the whole community, and it takes the, the leadership of all of our city, our city, our city leaders. So thank you very much for everything you do, and we're looking forward to it. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Miss Susan Lanfray over here is a senior government specialist with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. And the Middle Georgia Regional Commission does a lot for us, a lot for our city, and a lot for all Middle Georgians. Because this particular one is the best of all the regional commissions. You can tell Laura I said that, too, because it's the truth.
Oh, I was, I'm right.
But they are, they are the best, and they're recognized throughout the state as being the best. So I'm so proud to have you guys here and, and all y'all's efforts and a lot of things. Just, I mean, this is a, this is just a small example, but it's a great example of what y'all do. And thank you so much for it.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, and I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. I appreciate everybody out here. I appreciate our citizens. I really appreciate our citizens more than you think. We've done a great job containing COVID within the city. Can't get away from all of it, because it's still sneaking around everywhere. So behave yourselves. Keep your mask on when you get out in the public. You just, just do what you can. Stay safe and healthy as this holiday season is coming up. I'm gonna say Merry Christmas because it's coming up.
Sure.
Yes. Fast. Thank y'all very much. Council's all over.